Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City Hall. Welcome to Council meetings. And welcome to meeting at the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 30, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Please call the roll.
According to Ms. Garcetti-Grohl, Han Laban, Lando Misakowski Parks Perry Reyes, and Mr. Weiss, Zain Padia, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for starting the business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Grohl moves, and Mr. Reyes stands.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Misakowski moves, and Mr. Garcetti stands.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, there is a request to continue item number one. The advocate requests continuance to October 29.
Colleagues, request to continue item number one to October 29, seeing no objections, so ordered. Next item.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items two through six are business improvement districts, and the city clerk has a report on the announcement of the ballot tabulation. Do you wish to call those matters special?
I do not have a question. Members of the public suggest the council on these items, therefore, if the public hearings are satisfied, if you want to announce the results, we can move forward with the vote.
Yes, actually, the city clerk has the report.
Mr. Clerk.
Which items are we on? Two through six. Anybody got an agenda?
Item number two is to need a start downtown property and business improvement district.
Relative to the weighted balloting, the percentage of ballots cast for yes was 76.53, opposing 23.47. So at this point, the council is free to adopt the ordinance moving forward with the historic core.
Colleagues, this is item number two. Any requests to call this item special, seeing none?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, there are only 11 members present. Do you wish to hold this on the desk until 12 council members are present?
Do we expect 12 members today?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, let's hold all the ordinances, that would be items two through six, on the desk, as we await 12 members.
We will make one change on the ordinance and a boundary description, but that's a minor technical change.
We now have 12 members. And, Mr. Carey, the boundary change is only for item number two?
Yes.
Okay, item number two is now before us. Colleagues, we have the report. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item number two is approved, and before proceeding to item number three, we're going to recognize Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I'd like to request continuance on item number three for one week.
Okay.
Yeah, what I would like to do is simply announce the ballot tabulation at this point and get that process behind us. Again, this was an unusual business improvement district, as we reported at committee level. There are some significant parcels that are owned by a small number of property owners. However, the percentage of ballots cast was 80.51 for yes and opposing 19.49 percent.
I'm sorry, just point of order clarification. For requests on a continuance on this item, do we still go forward with the announcement of the vote count, or do we move forward with the...
We have to dispose of the vote count. The item will be continued. You will simply not act on the ordinance today. Next week, when it comes back before you, the council will then have the option of either adopting or not adopting the ordinance moving forward. It's a discretionary act on the part of the council.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so with that notification and no public comment requested on this item, item three is continued for one week. Take into consideration of council action is August 6. Next item, please.
Item number four is the BLQ, Peakville Boulevard Property and Business Improvement District.
Percent yes, 70.22 percent. Opposing 29.78 percent. Again, the council now can move forward if it chooses to adopt the ordinance establishing this business improvement district.
Okay, and with those ballot results and no public comment requested on this item, any discussion, seeing none? Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Again, this is another business improvement district that we have an issue with because we've modified the boundaries, but in terms of the balloting, it was 65.79 percent and 34.21 percent. This item needs to be continued to Friday because we have to have a revised management district plan and an engineer's report to support the changes in the boundaries and the assessments. So I would ask that this be continued to Friday. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any for the discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Again, this is another business improvement district that we have an issue with because we've modified the boundaries, but in terms of the balloting, it was 65.79 percent and 34.21 percent. This item needs to be continued to Friday because we have to have a revised management district plan and an engineer's report to support the changes in the boundaries and the assessments. So I would ask that this be continued to Friday. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any for the discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Did we do the ordinances? Can I ask for those ordinances to go forth with, Mr. President?
Items two, four, and six have been acted upon by the council, and we do have sufficient votes to set these items forthwith. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 25. Items seven and eight are the brush clearance ordinances, excuse me, the brush clearance reports from the fire department that were requested from last week's action. And item number 25, there are, a motion is required, there are two reports on the file.
Colleagues, items seven through 25 now before us. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests for specials? Items seven through 25. 24 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? We do need a motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss.
Later item.
Item eight.
Just hold item eight on the table.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 11, please.
Number 11?
Yes.
Has been called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you will, I'd like to request we reconsider item 59 of yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if appropriate, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, let's dispense with the items before us first, and then we'll take a motion for reconsideration. Let's call item 25 special as well as we wait for a motion from one of the committee chairs. Item eight, 11, 24, and 25 are called special, seeing no other requests for specials. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. And before I recognize Mr. Reyes for motion for consideration, colleagues, we have a few special guests with us. I think they may be hiding for a second here. Oh, here in the second pew. From the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang, no strangers to these council chambers, along with the city clerk, Tom West. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Welcome back. You're friends, and you're here regularly, but we know where you're keeping a good eye on us. Madam, Mr. Reyes, you had a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to request we can reconsider item 59 in yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if possible.
Okay, colleagues, you have a motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Again, this is another business improvement district that we have an issue with because we've modified the boundaries, but in terms of the balloting, it was 65.79 percent and 34.21 percent. This item needs to be continued to Friday because we have to have a revised management district plan and an engineer's report to support the changes in the boundaries and the assessments. So I would ask that this be continued to Friday. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any for the discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Again, this is another business improvement district that we have an issue with because we've modified the boundaries, but in terms of the balloting, it was 65.79 percent and 34.21 percent. This item needs to be continued to Friday because we have to have a revised management district plan and an engineer's report to support the changes in the boundaries and the assessments. So I would ask that this be continued to Friday. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any for the discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Did we do the ordinances? Can I ask for those ordinances to go forth with, Mr. President?
Items two, four, and six have been acted upon by the council, and we do have sufficient votes to set these items forthwith. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 25. Items seven and eight are the brush clearance ordinances, excuse me, the brush clearance reports from the fire department that were requested from last week's action. And item number 25, there are, a motion is required, there are two reports on the file.
Colleagues, items seven through 25 now before us. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests for specials? Items seven through 25. 24 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? We do need a motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss.
Later item.
Item eight.
Just hold item eight on the table.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 11, please.
Number 11?
Yes.
Has been called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you will, I'd like to request we reconsider item 59 of yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if appropriate, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, let's dispense with the items before us first, and then we'll take a motion for reconsideration. Let's call item 25 special as well as we wait for a motion from one of the committee chairs. Item eight, 11, 24, and 25 are called special, seeing no other requests for specials. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. And before I recognize Mr. Reyes for motion for consideration, colleagues, we have a few special guests with us. I think they may be hiding for a second here. Oh, here in the second pew. From the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang, no strangers to these council chambers, along with the city clerk, Tom West. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Welcome back. You're friends, and you're here regularly, but we know where you're keeping a good eye on us. Madam, Mr. Reyes, you had a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to request we can reconsider item 59 in yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if possible.
Okay, colleagues, you have a motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number five is property, excuse me, downtown industrial property and business improvement district.
Again, this is another business improvement district that we have an issue with because we've modified the boundaries, but in terms of the balloting, it was 65.79 percent and 34.21 percent. This item needs to be continued to Friday because we have to have a revised management district plan and an engineer's report to support the changes in the boundaries and the assessments. So I would ask that this be continued to Friday. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any for the discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05. No, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item, seeing none, and seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Did we do the ordinances? Can I ask for those ordinances to go forthwith, Mr. President?
Items two, four, and six have been acted upon by the council, and we do have sufficient votes to set these items forthwith. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 25. Items seven and eight are the brush clearance ordinances, excuse me, the brush clearance reports from the fire department that were requested from last week's action. And item number 25, there are, a motion is required, there are two reports on the file.
Colleagues, items seven through 25 now before us. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests for specials? Items seven through 25. 24 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? We do need a motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss.
Later item.
Item eight.
Just hold item eight on the table.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 11, please.
Number 11?
Yes.
Has been called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you will, I'd like to request we reconsider item 59 of yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if appropriate, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, let's dispense with the items before us first, and then we'll take a motion for reconsideration. Let's call item 25 special as well as we wait for a motion from one of the committee chairs. Item eight, 11, 24, and 25 are called special, seeing no other requests for specials. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. And before I recognize Mr. Reyes for motion for consideration, colleagues, we have a few special guests with us. I think they may be hiding for a second here. Oh, here in the second pew. From the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang, no strangers to these council chambers, along with the city clerk, Tom West. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Welcome back. You're friends, and you're here regularly, but we know where you're keeping a good eye on us. Madam, Mr. Reyes, you had a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to request we can reconsider item 59 in yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if possible.
Okay, colleagues, you have a motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Did we do the ordinances? Can I ask for those ordinances to go forthwith, Mr. President?
Items two, four, and six have been acted upon by the council, and we do have sufficient votes to set these items forthwith. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President. Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 25. Items seven and eight are the brush clearance ordinances, excuse me, the brush clearance reports from the fire department that were requested from last week's action. And item number 25, there are, a motion is required, there are two reports on the file.
Colleagues, items seven through 25 now before us. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests for specials? Items seven through 25. 24 called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? We do need a motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss.
Later item.
Item eight.
Just hold item eight on the table.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 11, please.
Number 11?
Yes.
Has been called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you will, I'd like to request we reconsider item 59 of yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if appropriate, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, let's dispense with the items before us first, and then we'll take a motion for reconsideration. Let's call item 25 special as well as we wait for a motion from one of the committee chairs. Item eight, 11, 24, and 25 are called special, seeing no other requests for specials. Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. And before I recognize Mr. Reyes for motion for consideration, colleagues, we have a few special guests with us. I think they may be hiding for a second here. Oh, here in the second pew. From the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang, no strangers to these council chambers, along with the city clerk, Tom West. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Welcome back. You're friends, and you're here regularly, but we know where you're keeping a good eye on us. Madam, Mr. Reyes, you had a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to request we can reconsider item 59 in yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if possible.
Okay, colleagues, you have a motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. And tabulate the vote. We may have to continue it until the following week if we don't get the engineer's report.
Okay, colleagues, any further discussion on item number five? If not, we have a request for this item to be continued to Friday. Ms. Perry moves a continuance without objection. Five is continued to Friday.
Item number six is fashion district property and business improvement district.
Yes, balloting, 76.05, no, 23.95. The council has the ability now to move forward establishing this fashion district, this improvement district.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carey. Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, seeing no requests or public comment on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Did we do the ordinances? Can I ask for those ordinances to go forth with, Mr. President?
Okay, so items two, four, and six have been acted upon by the council, and we do have sufficient votes to set these items forthwith. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 25. Items seven and eight are the brush clearance ordinances and, excuse me, the blush clearance reports from the fire department that were requested from last week's action. And item number 25, there are, a motion is required, there are two reports on the file.
Colleagues, items seven through 25 now before us. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Items seven through 25. Twenty-four called special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? We do need a motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss.
Later item.
Item eight.
Just hold item eight on the table.
Called special by Mr. Weiss. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Item number 11, please.
Number 11?
Yes.
Other than called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Council President, if you will, I'd like to request we reconsider item 59 of yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if appropriate, or whenever you think it's appropriate.
Okay, let's dispense with the items before us first, and then we'll take a motion for reconsideration. Let's call item 25 special as well as we wait for a motion from one of the committee chairs. Item eight, 11, 24, and 25 are called special. Seeing no other requests for specials, Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. And before I recognize Mr. Reyes for a motion for consideration, colleagues, we have a few special guests with us. I think they may be hiding for a second here. Oh, here in the second pew. From the city of West Hollywood, Mayor Jeff Prang, no stranger to these council chambers, along with the city clerk, Tom West. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Welcome back. You're friends, and you're here regularly, but we know where, you're keeping a good eye on us. Mr. Reyes, you had a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to request we can reconsider item 59 in yesterday's agenda and continue that for one week if possible.
Okay, colleagues, you have a motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item 59 from yesterday's agenda is reconsidered and without objection, continued for one week?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, then your hearing date will be August 6th. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items 26 through 65 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Twenty-six through 65 now before us. I do have card on item 64.
Mr. President?
We'll call that item special.
Want to call item 32 special?
Thirty-two called special by Ms. Perry. Any other specials? Other than item 64, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall therefore deem the public hearings open and closed. Any other specials? I have thirty-two and 64 called special. Seeing no further requests, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items 66 and 67 are closed session items, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session items on the desk.
Next item is item number 68, public hearing has not been held.
Sixty-eight is now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. With the public hearing satisfied, members wishing to call any of these items, item 68, any requests for specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Sixty-eight is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 69 is on the continuation agenda. It was on yesterday's agenda, and it's 2,000 brush clearance. Do you wish to call that special?
And I do have a card on item 69, let's call that matter special. Next item.
Item number 70 is also on the continuation agenda, public hearing has not been held.
And I do have a card on item 70, we'll call that item special. Next item.
Going back to the items called special, item number eight was called special by Council Member Weiss.
I think he requested this to be held on the desk for a while, let's come back to the site.
Okay, and the next item called special would be item number 11, and that's by Council Member Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I was hoping someone from the department was here regarding this particular motion. My question is how to deal with, how are we charging the different uses, if you will? I understand that this is a... Give me some background on this, and I've been...
Yes, Robert Tanna was from Bureau of Sanitation.
Julie Soder with the Bureau of Sanitation.
Yeah, we got notified from the county that the use of the property has changed, and so then there's a refund back to the property owner, and this is just to help us best to get the refund back sooner to the owner.
So we are refunding the owners who charge X amount of dollars because of their stormwater runoff?
Correct.
Okay, my question is more to, are we charging, what's the structure like? Are we charging apartments, residential, commercial? What's the structure like?
The city establishes the charge, which is based on a typical residential unit, and it's $23 per a typical residence. Now, based upon that, it's the parcel size as well as the use code. So if you are a resident versus a parking lot, you have a different runoff factor which we calculate into our charge.
So in this case, would it be fair to assume that apartment structures are charged more because there's more coming from their particular parcels?
Correct. And this is based on information that is supplied to us by the county. The county will establish the use code.
So the county assessor giving you the property description gives you a structure about which you can charge?
Right, they also establish the runoff factor for each type of property.
Okay, so apartment, people who are renting from apartments, it'd be fair to assume that they also need to carry that cost on the rent that's being charged against the owner, correct?
I don't know what the nature is between the property owner and the renter.
That would be an assumption.
Right, but it's charged on the property tax bill, which is on the parcel owner.
Okay, so people who rent are now, have been paying for stormwater runoff, they pay for trash collection as well. No, that's not your area, but generally that's the rule of the city.
Correct.
Where people who don't live in apartments aren't charged for trash collection as well?
They're charged for the equipment charge.
Just want to understand where the revenue is coming from, and who in the city is paying for the services and who is not. Just want to put that for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, other members wishing to be heard on item number 11. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 24 called special by Council Member Garcetti, and there is an amending motion that I believe is in the process of being distributed.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This amending motion for Council Member Vieragosa, who couldn't be here because he's on the scene of a crime in his district this morning, just makes clear what the committee's action is. Committee members, if you remember, we took up the U-DAG items at the same time as the Washington Bulky Item Center items. Upon talking with the clerk, he said the records show that we took action on just the Washington Bulky Item Center, and we wanted to add this to make it clear in the U-DAG motion, that's the Urban Development Action Grants, that we will look for the interest money to be applied to the Washington Bulky Item Pickup Center or Drop-Off Center, which has been a great, great success, and we want to keep that going. So this is just to make that, which was the committee's intent, official. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, any further discussion? Any objection to the amending motion? Seeing none, we should consider item 24 as amending. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Item number 25 called special, and there are two reports on the file, a motion is required.
We'll be ready with the motion, item 25. Seeing none, let's hold that 25 on the desk. Proceeds to the next item.
Item number 32 called special by Council Member Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Mister, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to move to approve this technical amendment.
Technical amendment has been distributed.
The clerk doesn't have a copy.
Is it a verbal technical amendment? We haven't received one in writing yet.
Yeah, I have. I'm not sure why. Let me check with the clerk. Why don't you hold this on the desk?
Let's hold 32 on the desk. Proceeds to the next item.
Item number 64 called special, and as much as there are cards from the public.
Colleagues, item 64 now before us, and the council calls forward Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Jim, Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association, we rise in support of this. I do want to say, as I said yesterday, that there is a difficulty with gaining entrance into the council chamber, and it would affect the passage of enactment. And I did pass out a statement that you all have with the pertinent Brown Act problem. There is a problem with the Brown Act, you might say, kind of, it's at cross purposes. But I did want to say also that the shootings that we have seen have not been because of magnetometers, it's because people have bypassed magnetometers, both in San Francisco, remember the supervisor was the shooter, and also back east, because someone invited someone in and bypassed the magnetometers. So this is not really an answer to our questions, but I think we all live in a dangerous area, we can be shot on the street by drive-by shooters. We just have to live with the way it is today and hope that we have open access to our councilmen, which we do have in general.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. This concludes the comment for this item for today. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commander Lee from Los Angeles Department is en route to discuss this, and I think it would be appropriate that this be discussed in closed session and not in open session. And if we could move in that direction, I just think the security measures that we put in place should be for the protection of city hall employees, elected officials, and the visitors, the public. And if we unveil everything in the public session, it may serve to a disadvantage to those who may have an evil intention here at City Hall. But I do know that Commander Lee is en route, and if we could move this to a closed session, that would be helpful. And if it does go to committee, as Councilman Weiss is asking, I would also ask that that be done in closed session.
Mr. Weiss is next on the queue.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
I have to tell you, with all due respect, Mr. Zine, I saw a news broadcast last week in which you were pointing out some security flaws in City Hall on television. So what I think we should do with this, because everybody is concerned about this issue, is send it to committee. I would be delighted to hold a hearing there in closed session. Number of security measures were implemented in this building and other buildings after September 11. We may or may not have disagreements about whether we need to actually do more. I mean, I would personally like to see us do more to protect the citizens of the city and not the politicians, because I think what's been done is probably, you know, a very good start, but let's send it to committee, have a discussion there in closed session. If something needs to be reported back here, we'll do that. So my motion is to send it to my committee.
Colleagues, we have a motion to refer this matter to the CGS committee on the table. We're not going to vote yet, we're just announcing that so that everybody's following our discussion. I now have on the queue Mr. Laban, followed by Mr. Ludlow, and Mr. Zine for a second time. Mr. Laban.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Zine, weren't you on Fox 11 News the other night walking them through the magnetometer down on Main Street? Yeah, I saw you. I saw you, you were. And I just think it's, you know, amazing, Dennis, that you'd want to say, let's go to executive session, when you walked them through and said how easy it is to get any building. I think Mr. Weiss made a real important point about the protection of citizens in Los Angeles, wherever they are, but also the seats of government are very important to be protected when it comes to public safety. And also, Mr. McQuiston, who is a constituent of the 13th District, spoke eloquently that it was not people bypassing magnetometers in New York or San Francisco, but it was someone who worked within the building. Mr. President, there's a motion on the floor, I want to put another motion on the floor. Can I do that? I move that we take this matter, number 64, in executive session today. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, well, it is agendized for today. If necessary, we have properly posted and notified the public that we can consider this in closed session. So let's now hear from Mr. Ludlow.
And let me say, it would go to a committee after we had discussion today. So wouldn't we try to decide anything today? But I think we should discuss it today and then go to committee afterwards.
Mr. Ludlow.
Yeah, I just want a second, though, I think that's exactly the right way to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zine, for a second time.
The concern I have is not only for City Hall, but there are other city buildings, other city employees, other visitors to municipal buildings, and my concern was not only for City Hall, but for other city structures. And I think if we do an executive session or duplicate, and if we're going to send it to committee, we have the experts who can give us information on this, and I would support sending it to committee and send it to a closed session in committee. But I don't think if we do it for discussion here in executive session and we take it to committee, it really duplicates that effort. We don't have all the experts here, but they could be there at the committee work. It could be done in closed session. And also, to clarify Mr. Laban's question, I was asked by Fox News about the security precautions, the security measures, and they were in the lobby of City Hall. And I did tell them that we had flaws, I didn't discuss all of the flaws, that we needed to analyze and address, and this was all brought about because of the tragedy that happened in New York City. So I believe that we have to review, and we have to continue to review and analyze the security, not only here at City Hall, but other municipal buildings. And that was my issue, not just this facility, but other facilities that we have for the public to venture into the regional centers, the community centers that the city of Los Angeles operates, for the welfare of our employees, for the welfare of the public to visit them. So I have no problem sending it to committee, have it in closed session to committee, having the experts assemble there, because all we'll do today, if we do an executive session, the experts aren't here, we'll have dialogue for a period of time, it's going to go for committee for a thorough review, and this will give an opportunity to be prepared to go to committee for the executives, for the closed session in committee. So I would support that. I just think it's a duplication of effort if we do it today and we do it again tomorrow. But to clarify, Mr. Laban, the only thing that brought us about was the tragedy in New York and how the news was trying to cover that and link it to the city of Los Angeles, and that's what it was all about. So I will, again, support committee, closed session there, and move it all there instead of doing it here today. One thing that we have to understand, members and council members and members of the public, this is a building that we're all in, for example, this very moment, if somebody tries to attack one individual in this building or they infringe upon our security, what happens is everyone in the building is at risk. What happened in New York when they brought down those two towers wasn't an attack on an individual, they were victims of every kind because they were in that place. For example, this is an ongoing responsibility that we have to do, is to make sure that we monitor and constantly improve on our services here to protect the public, not only ourselves as council members, but the public. I'm very proud to say that the second bill that I got signed when I was a legislator, when I got elected in 1996, was actually a bill to give our general services police, who are post-certified, the opportunity and responsibility to carry a firearm in the process of their job. Now, they are involved in thousands of incidents a year, each year, thousands of incidents they're involved in, and it's a shame that at one time we did not allow them to have the tools necessary to do their job and to protect the public and to protect us as elected officials. It's unfortunate that sometimes people focus on a particular individual, but all too often we know, and over and over again, we see that innocent people, that bystanders who were not even the target are actually victims of crime and sometimes even killed. So I appreciate Mr. Zine's motion here, and I also appreciate the fact that we do need to make sure that we discuss this thoroughly and make sure that we take actions appropriately. And in addition to that, I just want to remind everybody, this is an ongoing responsibility. It's not like something that we fix one day and we never have to look at it again. This is something that we're going to constantly have to be revising and looking at as people get more sophisticated and people get more daring about how they're going to try to do something inappropriate to the public or to us elected officials.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that in dealing with this whole security issue, we have to remember, and Janice Hahn remembers, that in September, we brought a major report to the council and said all the issues that needed to be dealt with, and most of it went unheeded and unfunded. And so I would hope that as we see incidents go across the nation, that we realize that the security of this building should be a daily process of review and not a knee-jerk reaction to incidents. And it's always going to come down to the balance of security for the employees and the public and for the seat of government balance to where business can actually can occur. Because if we lock this building down and no one shows up for the business of the city, we've not fulfilled what our responsibilities are. But I would hope that General Services is given the latitude to continually evaluate, bring to us when they see there's a need, and that we would be sensitive enough to fund those things that are important for the safety, but that we not go through a major reaction to an incident 3,000 miles away that takes them away from the course that they do daily. And I think we may need to go back to September of last year, find that report, and find out what are the things that we did not fund for General Services before we create a new review.
Ms. Mysakowski.
I'm just going to echo what Mr. Parks said in part. You remember when we put our metal detectors there, we had everybody in this building, all city employees, all council members, all electeds, having to go through those metal detectors. It was our employees who came to us and asked us, you know, the lines are too long, it's, you know, we've got cards, let us... Again, that balance between security and access is a valid one. So it was our listening with the report from General Services and allowing this alternate to come in that allowed freer access, at least from the employees and those who have the badge. The other thing, as Mr. Parks is talking about, is, right, members, today, we know we're in serious budget time, we do... We do not fund completely the general service requirement to give us the security that we have. We underfund it in the budget. Every year, for the last couple of years, we've added back just to do what we're doing today. Anything more than that, again, is going to be a higher cost. I agree that we have to be constantly reviewing it, constantly looking at either new technology, new equipment, new opportunities to improve, not only here, but in all the other facilities. But again, it is a balance, and I think we also ought to talk to and listen, not only to our own experts in General Services and other agencies, but the vast majority of people who come in this building. I don't know if you remember yesterday, Mr. McQuiston told us that even with the security difficulty of getting in, he could get in in time to put a card in to call an item special on the council, and he missed that opportunity. So again, it's a balance that we have to be maintaining, be cautious, but be aware that it's got to be taken in the whole.
Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, members, look in the back there. You know what's missing? And I know it's summertime, but we used to have the fourth grade from every class in Los Angeles coming here. Now they don't come because it's tougher to get to these buildings because of the challenges that have taken place. I just want to echo what Councilman Parks spoke of moments ago, that if people can't come to their building, what good is the building? And we've got to make it safe for everybody. But, Mr. Zine, I do believe we should discuss it in council today in executive session. And then I think we could refer the matter to Mr. Weiss's committee, and they could deal with it and update us on these issues here and come back with something. I think it's just real important that we do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Before we take a vote on whether we consider this item today or refer it to committee, I'd just like to state for the record and for everyone watching at home, all those fourth grade classes out there, it's still okay to come to City Hall. And you can watch us on cable if you can't make it. But no, there is a metal detector, and as long as you allow for a little bit extra time, we do welcome groups, public groups, on a daily basis into City Hall. So please don't take Mr. Labonge's commenting concerns out of context. Colleagues, we do have a motion on the desk for, by Mr. Weiss, to refer this matter to committee. Shall we open it up for a vote? A yes vote sends this matter to committee. A no vote allows for a closed session briefing with the intention of referring it to committee after the closed session discussion. Okay? Is that clear? A yes vote refers this matter to committee without further discussion. A no vote will take us into closed session in a few minutes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 4 noes.
Okay. That matter is referred to the Information Technology and General Services Committee. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 32 was called special by Councilmember Perry for an amending motion, and there is no amending motion, so that matter is now ready to go forward.
Ms. Perry.
Yeah. I just wanted to present the language that adds a section for Class A permit fee waiver program, that's all. And I think everybody has a copy now.
Okay. Has the clerk received the copy?
You still not have a copy?
No.
Okay. I don't know why.
Okay. If you can provide a written copy for the clerk, we can proceed with that item. Clerk's ready to go now. Any objection to that technical amending motion? Seeing none. Then, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Item 32, as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. And I believe we're ready with the motion, item 25. Mr. Weiss. On item 25.
I'm happy to move the budget report.
Okay. Thank you for that motion, Mr. Weiss. Any further discussion on item 25? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 69, called special for card from the public. And I believe this is also related to item number 80, brush clearance items.
Yes. Item 69 now before us. The council calls forward Robert Weinbach. Sir, from the podium, please.
Good morning, council members. I know I have a very short period of time to speak with you regarding this matter, and I'm going to read a prepared statement, actually, because I think that'll get me through the three-minute period of time. I, Robert Weinbach here in Warren, represent and attest to the following under penalty of perjury. I've always been totally in compliance with fire department rules and regulations regarding brush removal at the following address, 8136 Gould Avenue, my single-family residence and my adjoining property, which is a vacant lot contiguous and adjacent to my home. Construction of my home was completed in 2001 on Lot F, which is 8136 Gould, on severely steep hillside land I've owned since 1981, and the adjacent contiguous severely steep hillside parcel I've also owned since 1981. I do believe that the council members do have copies of this, which Denise Jack Weiss's assistant was kind enough to prepare. In 2001, the fire department sent me a notice that sufficient brush had not been removed from the property after I had spent $600 for brush clearance, the same amount of brush that had been removed each year since 1981, when I became the owner of the property. I indicated that to remove any more vegetation would jeopardize the hillside stability and create a potential for landslides. A senior fire inspector, also concerned about potential landslides, requested that I obtain a soils and geology report reflecting such a condition, if any additional vegetation were to be cut. Accordingly, I obtained said report, the soils and geology report, from a licensed soils and geology engineer, and I believe you'd have a copy of that. Notwithstanding said report, another inspector still wanted more vegetation to be cut. At a further cost of $300, which would be a total of $900, I had more brush removed. In spite of this, the inspector still wanted additional brush to be cut, and shortly thereafter, the department had its own brush contractors come in to cut more brush. Subsequently, as predicted, after the next rains, there were, in fact, several landslides caused specifically by the excessive vegetation removal ordered by the department, which caused boulders, rocks, and earth to fall onto the rear patio of my new home, which damaged the Jacuzzi and heater and redwood fencing, which amounted to over $800 in damage. Another subsequent landslide caused the concrete drainage culverts in the back of the property to fill up with superficial earth, rocks, boulders, and debris, estimated at over $1,500 damage for removal of landslide material, and further caused estimated $1,600 damage to my automobile, which was hit by landslide material when parked next to the property. And thank God that there was nobody getting out of the automobile at that time, or if there had been any other automobile parked there, it could have conceivably caused death or severe injury to the person. A proposed settlement of my damage claim caused by the department ordering excessive brush removal, which they were forewarned not to do, has been made by the city attorney's office. In view of the above, I respectfully request that my appeal be granted and the assessments be rescinded. I have a letter which I've addressed to the council members, and I'd just like to read a couple of things on here because there has been additional evidence regarding the claim for damages to my property caused by the fire department ordering excessive brush removal by their contractor, which they were forewarned not to do. Upon investigation of said claim, Michael Kaplan, the deputy city attorney of the city attorney's office, who came to my property just recently with a soils and geology engineer from the Public Works Department, has proposed a settlement to me of $3,000, which I accepted as reflected in an attached letter. I'm not sure if you have a copy of that.
Sir, may I ask you to conclude, please?
I will. So in any event, I'm just asking that all of you who are civilians, in 21 years of my owning the property, I have never had a problem like this. This has sort of been like a Kafka nightmare. I'm asking that, under the fact that I've had, there are mitigating circumstances involved here, I'm a huge fan of the fire department, and I want to do everything possible. In connection with that, I've had the property cleared this year. The same situation existed, and I have been signed off by the fire department. So I'm asking that this matter be looked at with compassion, and in fact, of the mitigating circumstances, I've got over $10,000, including the assessments, damages, and all of the other costs involved in it, and the fact that I have never willfully or in any way avoided my responsibility to do this. And I have cleared the brush, and I'm just asking that the assessments and the brush clearance charges imposed by the city be removed and rescinded, and I hope you will take all of these things into consideration. Thank you for giving me the time to tell this to you.
This concludes all the comment on this item. Chair, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Weinbach, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate the good faith in which you come here this morning, and I've read your materials, and I appreciate your taking the time to come down and also to so clearly lay out your concerns, and I do understand them. But I want to do, these here from the city attorney's office and the fire department, because I want my colleagues to get a full view of the case. There are two sides here, and we've had a chance to hear your side, and we do appreciate it. We're going to give these folks opportunity to state their side of the case, and then the council will decide. Appreciate it. Please hold my time, and I'd love to hear the captain and our city attorney.
Mr. President, following that, can I just introduce this group who's been sitting here all morning?
Quickly, please, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. From the Hennel Friendship Association of Southern California, distinguished delegation from Korea, they're the heads of their households, very special young people. Please rise. Come, Samidha Chigun.
City found it okay to come through the security measures at City Hall, and they're here with us, and we welcome them at the chambers. Okay. Do we have a presentation here, or we're just receiving? On the side.
Hi, President Padilla, Councilman Weiss. I met with Mr. Weinbach yesterday. We spoke extensively about the subjects of his property. His complaints were that he has never been in noncompliance, that the fire department charges excessive fees, that he had a soils engineering report stating that excessive brush clearance could cause landslide problems, and that he has a current litigation with the city, a claim for damages. The fire department's records indicate that we did suggest to him to get a soils engineering report, and we also checked with the city geological division. And upon advice from the city geological division, we went ahead and provided that brush clearance because he did not do it in a timely manner. His property was inspected three times during the year, and upon the third inspection, it was still noncompliant, so the fire department put it out to contract. The issue between the claim against the city for damage and the brush clearance issues appear to be two separate issues, and the fire department records do not show a reason to recommend different than what the hearing examiner recommended to the fire commission and therefore to you.
In terms of the claim, there is a claim pending that is a separate issue. It's still under investigation, and I don't believe a final resolution has been, has come about yet. They are still working on it. I spoke to Mr. Kaplan this morning. He's the attorney who's handling that. That's totally separate and should be not considered here.
So, tell me, what's the impact of that recommendation on what the recommendation would be?
The council may vote on the assessment today. It doesn't impact it.
Any further discussion on the side? Mr. Weiss.
Colleagues, I appreciate Mr. Weinbach. I really do appreciate your coming down here and making this, making your case, and I understand your concerns. When it comes to these sort of issues, we do have to, and we often do defer to the fire department, because we have to have concerns for the entirety of the hillside areas. The reality is, is that if, in one place, we have a fire, we're putting at risk thousands, if not tens of thousands, of people. I appreciate the work the fire department's done. I appreciate the work that you've done in coming forth diligently and in good faith. Based on their recommendation, I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that their recommendation below be upheld. So that's my motion, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. We're prepared for a vote. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
69 is approved. I believe we're also ready to act on item number eight. Any discussion on item number eight? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
As well. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 70 was called special, and as much as there are cards from the public and an amending motion has been distributed.
Item number seven now before us, and the council calls forward Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Not having seen the amending motion, I'm a little bit of a loss here, but I did put out a statement in the record. This is a confusing matter to me because the amount, one and a half million dollars, is a drop in the bucket according to the $50 million that LACC has now, which it can use to build this, and I'm just questioning whether or not we can use the money to better use somewhere else, since we do have a tremendous budget crisis. The other matter that I was confused about, too, is that obviously, in the write-up, there's also a mention of something that is actually in the Wilmington area that doesn't seem to have anything to do with the LACC situation, and it looked to me like it ought to have been a separate item. Otherwise, I have no comment.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise to support this motion. Want to thank my colleague Eric Garcetti in the mayor's office for pushing this forward. Bottom line, colleagues, is that we have close to 400,000 folks, close to half a million, who do not have a high school diploma. Majority of those folks live around the downtown Los Angeles areas, eastern part of the San Fernando Valley, and a good area around Wilmington. To be able to support this project is a step in the right direction. The 1.5, just as a response to the query about the use of this money, the area has fought hard to maintain historic buildings. The facade and the shell of the structure is going to be kept intact. It's going to reflect the period in time in which we were able to give a lot of character to our architecture, reflects the history of the area. This campus is a much-needed campus in a very dense area that is in great need of education and recreational facilities, one of the priority areas of the city, and parts of the city where people literally have to go three, four, or five in the morning just to get classes to learn how to speak English. That happens at adult school. So this campus is a dearly needed campus. Again, I urge your support, and it's a project that's a long time coming. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, too, rise and support colleagues of this today. I just wanted to address a couple of questions that were raised by Mr. McQuiston. This money is specific EDA money, so it's not general fund money that can be moved around in these budget times, and it is specifically line itemed in our plan for the projects around LACC, northeast campus, and Taylor Yard. And more specifically, what it really does is, because there is, as you pointed out, quite a bit of bond money from the two community college bonds, this allows us to integrate planning for economic development around that, and how we can look at that entire corridor, which affects really three council districts in northeast Los Angeles and is such a vital hub even between Glendale and Los Angeles. So it allows us to do a lot of that study work, a lot of that implementation, to make sure that that is well coordinated with the community college district. And either fortunately or unfortunately, it cannot be switched for other causes. So it's a good suggestion, but this is where it's intended, and this is where it should be.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Others wishing to be heard? If not, item seven now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special meeting. Do you wish to... Mr. President, there is a special meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
It was posted for 10:30. It is now 11:10 a.m. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Lavange, Ledo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Riegosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, fourteen members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is in session. Colleagues, we do have one item on the special meeting agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please brief the item?
It is a veto message from the mayor disapproving the ordinance adopted by the council on July 16th regarding determining that certain city-owned property, real properties are no longer required for use by the city. This would require twelve votes to override the mayor's veto, and there is a time limit of September 12.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I have Mr. McCrory come up and discuss this issue? This issue was discussed at length at the ITGS recently, and I believe voted on unanimously. And what I'd like, I understood from the veto message, there was some concern about whether we followed the city process, and maybe you can comment on that.
John McCrory, Department of General Services. I spoke to the mayor's office on Monday when they told me that there was a veto letter coming out. The issue is not so much did we not follow the process, but can the process be made better? Currently, we send out letters when we have a parcel or property that becomes surplus, and we, it's not an affirmative request. We basically have language that says, if we do not hear from you within thirty days, we assume you have no objections to the sale. That is what the mayor's office wants to strengthen and make a more affirmative process.
Was that, were you aware of that before this item came before committee and the council?
Not specifically those words, but for the last year, we have been looking at the sale of surplus property and trying to codify the processes better.
Do you recall what agencies we contacted as to that letter advising them of the sale, the potential sale?
Generally, the agencies we contact deal with housing, development, and wreck and parks.
Now, is also is the process contacting the council office that's impacted by the sale?
Correct. Every property, the council officer has a property, we contact directly.
And so you receive no information from the individual council offices as relates to this opposition to the sale?
No, of course not. I have no knowledge of that.
Or any additional alternative views?
None.
Okay. The one thing, and I've talked to Mr. Weiss, the new chair of ITGS, he wanted to have this go back to committee to discuss some of these new rules, and so everybody's familiar with them. And so I would propose and have a motion, we send it back to committee, although I just want to make it clear that what was done in committee followed the exact extent of what was in place at the time. And so I just, but we will send it back to committee and reevaluate and hopefully strengthen those issues of getting a affirmative declaration as opposed to the non-responsive letter. I guess that's the main issue.
Correct.
Mr. Parks.
If I may take one moment, I think also in the letter, the letter does not stop the sale. What the letter is asking us to do is go back again to those departments, and we have committed to do that within the next two weeks.
Thank you very much. Again, colleagues, have a motion to refer the veto message to the ITGS committee September 10th file. It's September 12th. So we have a little bit of time to work with, Mr. Weiss.
And that was actually my question. Time limit on September 12th, which means that it needs to be, if we don't act on it by September 12th, the mayor's veto takes effect. Could you just explain the time?
After the mayor's veto, council has forty-five days to act. So it can either go back to committee, or council can act on it to the end.
Okay, well, I appreciate that clarification, and I appreciate, Mr. Parks, your willingness to send it to committee. We'll take it there, and we'll turn it around quickly. And I understand that this rule, Ms. Hunt, have some desires to look at the policy aspects of that, and I think I'm happy to do that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. We have a motion. We have a second. And I would like you to have Ms. Hunt, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Miskowski, and Mr. Parks for a second time. Ms. Hunt.
Thank you. I mean, I think this, the mayor's veto actually gave us an opportunity to look at this policy in a bigger way, and whether or not we're really doing it in the most efficient manner possible. And so one of the things I want to do is make sure that we got a report back also to Government Efficiency Committee, so that we can look at, is this the most efficient way to dispose of surplus property, and is there a better way we can make sure other departments are aware of it, and we can look at other uses? So I would like to talk also to Government Efficiency as well, at the same time.
Okay, let's send a memo. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. This particular issue, again, just echo my colleague, I appreciate the mayor bringing this to light. Many times I find, because of the fact that our city formulas don't always respond to conditions as they are evolving into different parts of the city. These are formulas that are pretty standardized citywide, but in fact, when you have density issues, you have poverty issues that essentially are at a pace that has outdistanced the adequacy of resource allocation that current city formulas have established. So for me, looking at these parcels, as surplus properties become an opportunity, well, I can work with a nonprofit, I can work with a community group, I can work with a department who is willing to perhaps not have that sole objective, which is let's sell the property, get some money back into the conference of general fund. But quite frankly, that doesn't help certain parts of the city because the formulas just don't lend itself, and helping those areas that right now are suffering in a fashion that many other parts of the city will probably ever recognize. Bottom line is, if we're going to put parks near the river, if we're going to put facilities that deal with education and training, we need to leverage these real estate assets, these surplus properties. So I appreciate the fact that the mayor is allowing us to factor in that kind of thinking. It has been more than one occasion in my ten years of working as a staff and now two years as a council member, where I had to roustle the department head and say, look, I want to keep that property in my district. I don't want to sell it because I want it to be used for X, Y, Z purpose because the city can't keep up with the pressures that are evolving in my district. Very few places have more than twenty-five thousand people per square mile, and the pressures in education, recreation are just overwhelming. So how do I get to a point where I can leverage these resources to create a change in the quality of life that the formula is supposed to do, but never really does because it hasn't been adjusted, and it doesn't recognize those inequities? So thank you, Mayor, for getting this to this point, and hopefully we can get to that understanding that we need to reassess our formulas throughout the departments, from the police department deployment, to how we allocate dollars for open space, and all the way down the line. So thank you for this.
Ms. Miskowski.
Members, I have no objection to this going to committee, but I was rather surprised when I saw the veto, as it affected one property in my district. Why? Because an affordable housing developer asked if I could get this property sold so they could get it and put affordable housing on it. So it's exactly, the mayor vetoed this to say we're not doing enough. This is exactly to go in that direction. Having said that, let me also say, for the members, particularly some of the new members, ask Mr. McCrory, there is surplus property lists, there are lists, that each council office is, are given. Look at those. I've had my staff go out and say, you know, some of them are slivers. They're not really going to amount to much. Some of them can be nice spaces for open space, some of them for parking, and some of them are really, really ripe for housing. That's why we identified this one to say, let it go for housing. Let me, having said that, say that as we go back, I would like the General Services and ITGS to look at the issue of how can we sort of insure or give a discount. Members, when we put our properties for sale, we say to every city department, do you want them? And if we don't hear back, they don't do anything. We also say to other nonprofits, the school district, Santa Monica Conservancy, I used to have some in the Santa Monica Mountains that the Conservancy looked at, and every time we put it on the list, the Conservancy got it. Other city, other government agencies get first right at original cost to the city. I mean, if you've got some properties that cities help for twenty, thirty years, you can get some pretty good bargains if you're a government agency. I think we should add a third criteria. Let's add that criteria to groups that we will define, affordable housing developers or the like, so that they, because one of the problems when they do go out is the General Services has to go out to bid unless there's a reason that you might be able to say it's a sliver of property, sell it to the adjoining property owner if they want. They have rules. Let's review those rules, but let's get some of these. As I said, I identified one here. It's a great, I've got others I'd like to identify to go for affordable housing. If we change some of those rules, so that as we put them out there, we give that first right of refusal to encourage the kinds of things we want beyond what the rules now are, then I think we will have benefited overall, and it's worth sending us back to committee to come up with those guidelines. But it's not good enough to just say, we're not affordable housing developers. We do do some bond work. We do, but it's the developer community out there that does this. So let's incentivize this and say that, you know, even if you may not compete with the best out there in terms of the price, because a market developer's going to go and, you know, bid a bigger price, but let's give enough of an incentive so that if it's affordable housing developer, they get the right to get it first off if no other city agency really wants it. So I appreciate this, because I say, I think we are looking, and I just say everyone should get a heads up. Look at those lists in your district, if you can identify those projects, those properties right now, start moving them forward with General Services in the ways that I think you want to.
Mr. Lavange.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe we're in committee on this, and public works an aspect of this type of thing. Mr. Dean, could you join the table, please, because you're familiar with property around the city on this issue? I know we're going to committee on this here, but Mr. Reyes, you made an extremely good point. I want to see us have a survey, and you probably have it right now. I also want to see technology and use this great ITA technology board somehow to show where the facilities are, because it's real important, because everybody should have a certain amount of facilities to share, why they locate yards in one area or the other. Sometimes it's for historic reasons that it was the end of the town that they put it there. Or interesting enough, Ed, why so much is located on Avenue 19, is it was the end of the town. It was next to the river. Now, where do they go? Or where are they central to service? We share it today. Starting in five minutes, the North Central has their appreciation day for all the trash collectors in the north central part of the city. That yard is there. And where does it go if it moves? What impact it has on the community? But I think we have to survey it. Mr. Dean, you're probably knowledgeable fellow on these land issues. Give me a little help here, because as council members, we should know where the property is, and we should know what its value is, and know how we could increase the value by, whether it's a school or another facility there, or a consolidation yard. That yard on San Fernando Road was just sanitation and had a landfill, had an incinerator in it when I started in nineteen seventy-four, and it became a consolidated yard because all the city departments couldn't work together, and they made them all work together in a consolidated yard, and that kind of process. Mr. Dean, please, for the next minute and fourteen seconds.
Basically, as was stated, most of these properties, surplus properties, are small pieces of property that nobody wants. There are some large parcels, some of this is represented what's before you today. I was just talking to Mr. McCrory. I think that we could put on the website for everybody to take a look at where these are, what the locations are. We can, and we can look at the possibility of doing a map, and that way, everybody can see if they're interested, and everybody can see where they're located, and maybe drill down to their size. In many cases, the property is not going to be really valuable for the reason that we still have it, because we do go through this process from every five or six years.
Just, every piece of parcel in Los Angeles has a value, and it will become even more valuable because there's one thing they're not developing is new land. So there's a value to it. Whether it's a developable land, every parcel has some value, Mr. Dean.
I'm not ready to subscribe to that totally, but sometimes the, because of its location and its size, it has, in some cases, negative value, but nonetheless, it has some, it does have value. It just may not be positive. So I will subscribe to what you have to say. In any event, I think that you should look at, we will get you the information, and we'll work with General Services to put it on the website so everybody can take a look at it, and they can view it, and make the process even easier to ascertain whether it has value for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome, Mr. Lavange.
And your team at General Services for the work you do. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I just maybe remind everybody about, two months ago, ITGS dealt with this issue of two thousand pieces of surplus property, and every council office should have gotten their copy so that they were aware of what's available in their district before it went through this process. And that was the purpose of the survey done by General Services. At that ITGS meeting, we're advised that the mayor's office has a private consultant surveying the land for the three proprietary departments so that we will be aware of what are additional pieces of land. Just last week, I put together a motion that asks that before we start selling those pieces of property and before we destroy those houses in Westchester that have been purchased because of the airport, we try to merge those two items, such as the buildings and the property, before we made a decision on tearing down the houses. So there are a variety of things that are moving forward, but I think if each council office goes back a month or so, they will find the information that Mr. McCrory put together. And one of the things, we did not want to go to the website yet until we can determine how many pieces of those property are available for the housing that is tentatively going to be destroyed in Westchester. And the other issue in dealing with this area is that, one of the things, again, the property is, we've gone through many of them in the eight districts. There are strips of land, and they're not available for much other than easements. But again, one of the things I ask you is that when we calendar this in ITGS to talk about these guidelines, if we can make sure all of the parties are available so that the input is done, so that we can create a policy once and for all and not have it created after the fact as opposed to the front end of the process, so everybody knows what the new rules are. And so I asked Mr. Weiss when we do that, if we can have the mayor's office and whoever else is interested, Wreckin Park and all those people that you've contacted about these issues would be helpful for everyone.
Mr. Reyes.
Now that we have you at the center table, I just want to suggest a couple of things that follows along the thoughts of Mr. Lavange, and that is, and for example, and I'm sure this applies to me and my colleagues, on Avenue 27 on the road, I have three or four maintenance facilities all within a four, five-block area. We have a lot of parking space that's consumed by each department. I would like for us to look at the fact that, and I've been trying to do this for like six years now, is to consolidate the parking on one side, use our air rights to maximize that use, open up this important land, and use that as a way to stimulate our tax base. We don't have the luxury to underuse our land, especially land we control. So I think it behooves us to look at, it might be costly upfront, but in the long run, the kind of revenues we can generate if we can open up that land along the river for different uses, mixed uses, commercial, light manufacturing, environmentally friendly uses, open space. These are the kinds of concepts that should be emerging, that if General Services, along with Planning Department and CRA and other entities that are involved with the rehabilitation, redevelopment of our city, that we start understanding the geographic strategic location of these lots and stimulate new opportunities. If we control the land, the maximum amount of jobs we can create, if we take the time to coordinate that way. I know I've been working with Department of Transportation on the lot next to Young Night Church to stimulate that mixed-use environment. It's been really, really hard. I've got all those other uses of departments, and I know sometimes like corralling cats when you're dealing with all these different department interests. Because you are General Services, you do deal with the land, and I would hope we can get to that point, and perhaps maybe the Senora Building that Council Lavange is looking at, that we look, if we can at least give an attempt to see if we did this here, we can produce this opportunity here, if we use our airspace strategically, especially in those parts of the district where we're just crunched up to the point where we're just, it's a devastating effect when you have that kind of density in a very small space. So that would be a friendly amendment to your directive there, Council Lavange, that we look at the potential of alternatives, that we can that we look at the potential of alternatives, that we can consolidate properties and go vertical, use our airspace to stimulate and put joint ventures on these parking needs.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Members wishing to be heard on the side. If not, we do have a motion to refer this matter back to the committee.
And there was a motion by Councilmember Hunt who also referred this to audit and governmental efficiency.
Is there any objection to that? Then without objection, we can refer this item to both of those committees for consideration. And a reminder to the chairs of those committees, we do have a time limit on this, September 12th is the last day for this full council to act. Thank you very much, and I believe that concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us now conclude and adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And the council calls for Ms. Tessa Maria Maxwell at this time.
My name is Tessa Maria Maxwell, and I serve as an advisor to President Bush on community development, and I help analyze systems. One of the things that I want to reassure you of is I am working on a gang violence reduction strategy now. I've already presented the package to Chief Bratton, and I just want to also reassure you that this city is a priority on President Bush's desk. I think that's basically it. I'm looking at the L.A. Bridges Program, and I'm making sure that the project that I'm working on has the strategies to help reduce. I'm also communicating with the gangs in a very positive way, and I'm also personally involved, so that makes it a difference. I'm living in the area and I'm living what's going on now, so that makes me to be able to identify with it on a whole other level. I just wanted to reassure you, thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the comment for today. And ma'am, please relay to the president that we would love some funding out of the White House and the federal government for these initiatives. Concluding public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
It's to housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
And I understand there is a special one that's in the process of being signed and distributed. It's presented by Councilmember Perry. Do you wish to take that matter up or after we've come out?
Let's take it up now, I've just received it, and I believe you've just received the copy as well. Mr. City Attorney on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. On Sunday, July 20th, 20-year-old Dexter Durrell Rideout, the resident of City of Los Angeles, was fatally shot in front of 4915 South Hoover Street. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department specifically has requested that this matter, this reward motion, be expedited through council. Pursuant to the government, council must first determine that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may consider the second motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Special one is now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself. Ms. Perry.
Yeah, I needed to do that as a Rule 23. We received a call from LAPD that they would like to have a reward motion as quickly as possible to aid them in solving this case. It's a very sad, tragic situation, so I'd appreciate your support today.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. The members wishing to be heard on special one. On special one. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forklift, please. Next item.
That clears the desk, Mr. President, for closed session. Items 66 and 67.
In confluence of California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Please clear the chambers and as you do, Mr. Zine, for the record, is recused on item 69.
66, I think.
Excuse me, item 66.
Item 66, I'm a defendant in that case and I'm going to recuse myself. Item 66.
Are there any announcements? Ms. Han and Mr. Lavange, do you have announcements? Mr. Lavange, why don't you announce?
Well, Janice and I, we're going to announce that this past Sunday, someone who was born in Culver City but raised in Fullerton, Gary Carter, who attended Sunny Hills High School in Fullerton, was elected into the Baseball Hall of Fame in Cooperstown, New York, and also joined by Ms. Han and Eddie Murray, who went to Locke High School in Los Angeles, born in Los Angeles in 1956, played 21 seasons, was an outstanding baseball player. So two Southern California products, two Southern California student athletes, two Southern California champions, entered the pinnacle of professional baseball in Cooperstown in the Hall of Fame. In addition, I believe this weekend, one of the absolute greatest athletes to ever play at the Coliseum, Marcus Allen, will enter the Pro Football Hall of Fame for his years with the Los Angeles Raiders and the Kansas City Chiefs. As a Heisman Trophy winner from the University of Southern California, nobody ran the football better or elevated 10 other members of a team to drive down and score like Marcus Allen. So I think congratulations are all out to those three individuals from Southern California. What college is that? University of Southern California. I just want to repeat that, USC Trojans. The greatest tailback to ever play who, again, would motivate his players.
Are there other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. One on, let's see, Saturday, August the 2nd, at Exposition Park Community Center, one of our local community-based organizations, Broad Spectrum Community Development Corporation, will be holding a financial empowerment conference for residents of the eighth district. It's a free conference for all community members. It will be Saturday, August 2nd, and I don't have the time, but it'll be an all-day conference, nine o'clock. The next one, on Sunday, August the 3rd, the Mert Park Village Merchants Association in cooperation with Community Bill will be hosting an open house series for the entire weekend. The open house in association will provide light refreshments. In addition, participating shops in the village will offer special discounts on items in the store, and the festival will start at noon and commence at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there adjourning motions? Would all please rise in attention for adjourning tributes? Let me start with Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. With great sadness, I want to adjourn in the memory of a 20-year-old young man, Dexter Rideout. And I'd like to read a portion of a letter that was sent to me by a constituent in my district who was his big brother for 12 years. "I've been a big brother for over 12 years to a young man named Dexter Rideout. This July 20th, on a Sunday, at 11:00 a.m., he was walking to his home when he was shot and killed. A car approached him and the passenger asked what gang he belonged to. Dexter said he didn't belong to any gang. They shot him six times. Dexter was eight years old when we were matched. He was inquisitive, sensitive, and full of life. I remember when I took him on his first elevator ride, he was terrified. And when we first ventured outside the boundaries of South Central L.A., he was awestruck. Over the years, I watched Dexter and his mother struggle to carve out a safe haven in the midst of their surroundings. Sure, he did stupid things that any kid would do, but he never hurt anyone, he never joined a gang, he stayed in school, and he was training to become a mechanic." It further reads, "About a year after Dexter and I were matched, he asked me how long I would be his big brother. I told him he was stuck with me, that would be my little brother forever. I loved Dexter and I miss him dearly." This is important, councilmembers, because at this time Dexter lived in Jan Perry's district, and today she made a motion for a $25,000 reward so they could try to capture his killers. And this comes at the core of that motion, the motion that was made by Ed Reyes yesterday about communities like this not having enough investigators and getting down to the bottom of these murders. So I think it's very timely and it's a grim reminder of the job that we have to do and that we really must make a difference for these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange.
Yes, Madam President, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Surap Yarayan, who was 84 years old, was a contributing member of the community in Hollywood, and hundreds of people knew him and the impact that he had on the community. He lived to be 84 years old and was a great contributing member. Surap Yarayan. And also members, last week, know the passing of John Schlesinger. John Schlesinger was a great director of film. He lived to be 70-plus years old. He died on Friday. He was born in London, a son of a pediatrician who began his film career in 1962, and many, many motion pictures, but his greatest motion picture was that of the 1969 classic of Midnight Cowboy that starred Dustin Hoffman and John Voight, which talked about the love of two men, which really was earth-shattering, breaking. It was an X-rated film at the time. If you look at it today, it's very soft in comparison to what we visualize in movies today, but it talked about the love of a guy from Texas who went to New York City and met Rico Ratso and Joe Buck, and Rico Ratso had this partnership, and it really was earth-breaking, earth-shattering as a film and still stands today. I had the opportunity to meet John Schlesinger years ago when the film celebrated its quarter anniversary with the Hollywood Film Festival. I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti is not here, because I know that's something that he works on too, and he was very pleased to meet. And I remember when we were in high school, because it was 1969, we all went to see Midnight Cowboy because it was such a tremendous film. So here's a man who created that film that still stands today. He lived a wonderful life. His life partner, Michael Childers, a brother Roger, and a sister Hillary are survived by him and his many films include Far From the Maddening Crowd, Sunday Bloody Sunday, The Days of the Locust, Marathon Man, Yanks, The Falcon and the Snowman, and Pacific Heights. And he also directed a Paul McCartney video and was one of the eight directors who contributed to the official 1972 film on the Munich Olympic Games titled Visions of Eight, which was an amazing film as well. John Schlesinger, the great director of Midnight Cowboy, passed away. And also, Madam President, members, the Los Angeles Police Department did a wonderful job today in escorting the body of Bob Hope from St. Charles Church in North Hollywood to San Fernando Mission where he was laid to rest. And it was nice that the Los Angeles Police Department were able to escort him and assist the community to Luca Laken and the family in the passing of Bob Hope. So I wanted to stand and thank our police department as we again remember Bob Hope as he's laid to rest in the San Fernando Valley in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, did you have one?
Oh, no.
No, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to add something to what Mr. Cardenas said today, and I want to read you an email that I received while I was down here on the council floor, because I want to remind those, not only in the council chamber, but those who may be listening, that what we do in here does affect people, the choices we make, the votes we cast to allocate resources, whether it's a detective or more detectives or more police into an area that's been disproportionately affected. What we do touches people's lives. I have to be careful what I say in reading this because I can't endanger the people who live in the area, but it's important. This information comes from a child who lives close to where Dexter was killed. The child said that Dexter was shot in the back, then his killers got out of the car, walked over and shot him in the head. It was brazen and horrible and has the people in the community completely terrified. They are afraid to let their children walk down the street, whether they are gang members or not. It is a sad, sad situation. He was shot and killed in broad daylight, he wasn't gang affiliated, and he lived a clean life. I just want, if there's one thing that I can do, is to keep reminding everybody in here and those people who are listening that we have to push and keep pushing to find additional resources to protect the families and the children that we have been charged to represent. And to remember the policies are more than just policies. They can transform people's lives or they can devastate people's lives.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Madam President, members of council, last week adjourned in memory of Samuel Ocean, the father-in-law of my deputy and Mr. Bernstein's deputy, Francine Ocean. Samuel was a Westwood resident, passed away on Monday, the 28th, at the age of 89. He was a developer and founder of Empire Savings and Loan headquartered in San Fernando Valley, a well-known philanthropist. He's an adventurer who recreated the historic journey of Hannibal across the Alps with the elephants. He's a well-known man in the area. He survived by his wife Linda, son Michael, daughter Barbara, daughter-in-law Francine, and grandchildren Sherilyn, Daniel, Karen, and Catherine, and great-grandchildren Zachary and Jaclyn.
Mr. Weiss? He wanted to second that, all right.
And I want to third that, and Sam Ocean made a great contribution to the Los Angeles Zoo, which is very important, and also was very fundamental in joining in the revitalization of Miracle Mile about 25 years ago with that Sam Ocean.
Madam Clerk, call the roll. Council is adjourned. Counsel is adjourned.